I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk take the roll, please?
Mayor Brohl.
Here.
One more set.
Here.
Two, O'Connell.
Here.
Three, Radamacher.
Here.
Four, Wyland.
Here.
Five, O'Malley.
Here.
Six, Virchell.
Here. All present accounted for. At this point in our agenda, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present for any items not on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to address the council at this particular point? Bill, please come up, identify yourself and...
I'm taking you a lot of trouble this evening. I'm going to review a statement. And probably at the end of this, I will be a very unpopular person, but I feel it's something that needs to be said. Mayor Brohl, members of the city council, and citizens of Hudson. My name is Bill Knuth and I reside at 527 Fourth Street in the city. I'm here this evening to address you about what I feel are two serious issues facing our city. These are meeting the city's needs and property taxes. As you know, the council is presently working on the budget for the coming year. This year, as usual, they will be trying to establish, A, no new taxes for which they are to be commended. The councils in the past few years have been very successful at this. It is time, however, to consider the price we have paid for this effort. The good news is that we have, to this point, been able to maintain a good infrastructure of roadways, sewer, and water, and sidewalks. The bad news is that we have postponed the real personnel issues, facility issues, and funding issues that face us. Personnel issues we need to address include the need for more full-time staff in our police, fire, and emergency services to meet the increased needs for our community. We can no longer sustain a volunteer force to meet these needs. So far, we have been most fortunate in that the local industry has been cooperative in freeing workers to service our needs. But greater demands are being placed on our volunteers, taking them away from their jobs more frequently. This places an additional burden on them, their employers, and their families. The issue is being reflected in the city's inability to hire and keep quality employees to maintain the quality of life we have in our community. Facility issues we need to address include larger police department facilities, emergency services building for the fire and EMS, and a new library. These issues have been put aside or have been addressed with stopgap measures to maintain our budget. We are no longer in a position to continue to do this. All these issues are direct result of community growth and the increased demand for these services. We need to recognize we are no longer a city of seventy-five-hundred citizens any longer, but now representative of a community of over eleven-thousand persons, and we are continuing to grow. We can no longer afford not to address these issues or to use Band-Aids to temporarily solve the problems. The second issue is no new property tax increases. The city of Hudson in the past two years has been very fortunate in that we've been able to maintain our share of the property tax levies, but at a cost I've discussed earlier. In meantime, our tax partners, St. Croix County, the Hudson School District, and the Wisconsin Technical College System have all increased their share of the property taxes during some or all of the time we have maintained a neutral position. We can be proud of what we have accomplished, but we have paid a price for doing so. Realistically, we can no longer operate on financial assumptions we made in the past. The city has three options, as I see it. One, bite the bullet, realize we need to raise our taxes to meet our present needs. Two, continue to be as efficient as possible, finding new ways to operate our programs to meet our needs. We have been very good at this under the current administration. Or three, we can do nothing, operate at the present level, and fail to recognize that we are a growing community with both immediate needs such as personnel issues and increased needs which need to be addressed. I urge the city council in preparing our next budget to continue our present course of being as efficient as possible. More importantly, I would like to see a council with the courage to raise our city taxes to meet the total needs of our growing community. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else? Shirley. Or Pat, I mean.
Yeah, Pat, Shirley, I'm right.
I would like to invite the city to three great events. One event is coming up this week is a program to welcome all the new teachers to Hudson. We have approximately forty new teachers and school administrators, and they will all come from the Hudson School District, St. Pat's, and Trinity School. We're having a Good Morning Hudson luncheon on Wednesday, and this is a great opportunity for the city and for the chamber to welcome the new teachers to our community. And we also give them goody bags from all the businesses around town and welcome them with great blinder. The second thing is the girls' weekend bike ride. I'd like to encourage all women in town to participate. We have a Girls Just Want to Have Fun bicycle ride in 2007 on September 7th and 8th. We have a choice of three different rides between fifteen-mile, thirty-mile, or a forty-mile challenge ride, and they go through the historic part of town as well as out in the country. We encourage them to come on Friday night, and we have a welcome reception. Then on Saturday, we start the ride, and we end with lunch. It's just thirty-five dollars, and there's seventy participants. So there are lots of women in town that like to shop and have fun for the rest of the weekend, so welcome those women as they come to town. And the last thing is our Autumn Taste Walk, which is Saturday, September 29th. It's from ten to four. It takes place in downtown. The Locust Street is shut off from Second to Third, and then the Third Street parking lot is being used this year for craft show and children's activity center. There'll be approximately a thousand people will come to town and wander through downtown area. There'll be tastings at the restaurants downtown as well as restaurants from the hill that have come down for booths on Locust Street. It'll be a great opportunity. There'll be lots of music and fun for the entire area, and it's also free to the public, so thanks you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Eric Atkins, and I reside at 303 Liberty Street here in Hudson, Wisconsin. First of all, I wanted to extend a deep appreciation for the job that Chief Smith has done in his short time with the city of Hudson. He's done an excellent job, and we've appreciated the leadership that he has provided to the Hudson Police Department, and we are sad to see him go. With that being said, I'd like to follow up with this. As a taxpayer for the city of Hudson and as an employee, I'm encouraging the city council and the mayor to try to find the funds and the money that's necessary to enhance our police, fire, EMS, to get them to the position that they need to be to provide the best quality service possible for the taxpayers of the city of Hudson. I've lived in Hudson nearly all my life. I grew up here. I work here. I plan on retiring here, and I want to raise a family here. And to do that, I would like to have the safest possible environment for my family and for your families. And to do that, I think that we're going to need to start placing a priority on public safety, looking to find the funds that are necessary to make sure that these agencies can provide the best possible services to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate that. Anyone else? Anyone? Can I ask one more time? I'd like to read a letter that we received from Sheila Harzdorff. This was addressed to Gordon Conard. And it says, "Thank you for contacting me to express your concerns with the recent resignation of the Hudson Police Chief. I appreciate your input on this issue. As you may recall, limits on property tax increase were passed by the state legislature and signed into law by Governor Doyle in the last state budget. However, these limitations expired at the end of 2006. In the current budget proposal, Governor Doyle included a provision to limit property tax increases to four percent or the rate of new construction in a community." And by the way, I did write him a letter and congratulated him on taking that particular position. "Since the state senate and state assembly passed two different versions of the state budget, a conference committee is currently working to negotiate the differences and reach a compromise proposal. While the state budget has yet to be finalized, it is important to note that if property tax limitations are again signed into law, communities may pass referendums to increase spending beyond these limits." So we do basically have somewhat of an approach once we get this final information from the state. Aside from this letter, they're basically talking zero to two to four. And I think legislature may be talking two, governor's talking four, and sometimes legislators talking zero. We may end up with a two percent increase. If the municipality chooses to provide additional funds for its operations or programs, it may do so through a referendum. Thank you for your interest and comments. And so, as of today and last week, and when we talked about our budget, we basically were talking about a zero budgeting process, and that's how we got into this particular situation. But I did want to read that to you because if they come in with a zero budgeting, then we probably have the out to go to a referendum which would allow us to take into consideration some of the things that are needed by the police department and fire department. Any questions on that particular approach or proposal? So we do have somewhat of an out if they ever get to us and say, "Okay, this is what we've decided to do."
That's minus growth, right? That doesn't mean it would grow. How much is that a city council?
It's either the growth or the percentage, whichever is higher. So if it's two percent, the base would be two percent. If our growth is 2.7, we would get the 2.7.
Right.
We don't know that number yet. We're looking at, it's about 2.7 percent, but the state tells us what our net new construction is, and we haven't gotten that figure yet. Betty and I have just been guessing at it, so we're looking at 2.7. But until we get that number from the state, we don't know that either, so...
Is that what it was last year?
Last year was three-point-something, I think.
Last year, we had a
Revail.
Increase of $168,000 that we could add to our budget. $90,000 of that was for an increase in our insurance. Another $40,000 was for raises, which left us about $38,000 that we could increase our entire budget by. Fortunately, we had some capital projects approaches so that we could order equipment and things like that so that we did add some new trucks and some new equipment that was most needed. But if they tell us, "Hey, it's going to be zero or two percent, but you have to go to referendum," then I'm sure this council and I are going to take that particular approach. But we do have to wait until that decision is made.
That also doesn't affect the TIF on the right that expires?
The what?
The TIF money that would be coming to the city?
Well, the TIF, we can't close that until what, Betty, 2009?
We wouldn't see any benefit until 2009. At this point, we would see what's proposed in legislation, we would see no benefit. Taxes would drop, we would not gain the growth from that. Assembly has proposed that we would gain fifty percent of the growth, and Senate has it at zero percent of the growth. So at this point, we don't know if we could capture any of that and increase our tax levy because of it is still not included. You know, we'd still be at the point of having to go further to increase our tax.
Would that TIF money be offset with a percentage increase, or would that be additional?
All we do is reduce your mill rate, which would reduce your taxes. We would gain, right now, it would quickly reduce up to $700,000 for the city of additional tax income. But the way that's worded right now is that we'd just go all to reduce everything's tax.
And what was the earliest date we could close the TIF?
If we close it, it would have to be done with total construction, so we're looking at May of 2008 that we would close it. By then, we would see the benefits of those taxes in 2009.
So it's not that this council and I don't want to do something. I think we're in a stagnant situation, and until it's well-defined, we won't be able to take an appropriate approach. Now, does the council have anything to add to the little summary that I had? I'm sure that each and every one of you have something to say.
Well, I agree with the people who spoke today, we need to get this stuff done.
Well, yeah.
And if that means a referendum, that means a referendum. I think the community is ready for that. Our police department is inadequate, our police force needs to be upgraded. Our fire department space is inadequate, our EMS staff and space is inadequate. We need to take care of us.
Nobody disagrees with that statement. I think.
No disagreement.
No disagreement.
We've all said the same thing that Paul just said.
Absolutely. Any other questions on the questions or on the statements? Anyone? Mr. King, or, excuse me, Sean.
Yes, sir.
Come on up here and identify yourself.
Good evening, I'm Sean T., and I reside at 607 Prairie Drive in the Village of North Hudson. I am presently a member of the Hudson Police Department. And I guess the question that I have is, I hear the word "we" a lot, but I guess my question is, is the common council informed of every single decision with respect to the budget that's made? In other words, is a certain percentage of the budget cut out before the common council gets a chance to approve it?
No.
The way it's worked in the past is I've been given, the staff have been giving, Betty and I have been given marching orders as to what their goal is. Do we want, you know, no new taxes? Do we want to increase the tax? We then work towards that budget, but the council is given, told, you know, "Okay, we move this much out of here," or whatever, and they're given that documentation. And it's council ultimately decides, you know, if in order for us to meet our goal, we've had to move money out of here or move it over there. The council then has a final decision as far as...
Nobody passes the budget unless it goes through the entire council.
The council doesn't go line by line through the, if you're asking if the council goes line by line through each of the...
Although they have that opportunity.
Hundreds of, and they're getting, they're giving all the paperwork and all the documentation that shows the department request, what we as a staff figured out to get it to where the council directed us to. And then, like I said, ultimately, then when they get to the budget hearing or at meeting or whatever, they can direct us to move things around.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, let's go on to the consent agenda items. The items marked with C, and Madam Clerk will verbalize those for us.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of August 6th, 2007, to approve claims for payment in the amount of $1,955,765.43. A detailed description is available in the Clerk's office on request. To approve the issuance of nine regular operators licenses for the period August 21st, 2007 through June 30th, 2009. And to approve the issuance of three temporary operators licenses to be used September 22nd and 23rd at the Hudson Hockey Pig Roast. And to approve the issuance of two temporary operators licenses to be used September 15th and 16th at the St. Patrick's Fall Festival. And to deny the issuance of one operator's license. Additional information is available in the Clerk's office on request. To place on file the quarterly report of the Water Utility Director and the annual report of the Assessor and the Public Utility Commission minutes of August 13th, 2007. That is all.
What is your pleasure on the consent?
Move for approval.
Second. Roll call vote.
Horsett?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Virchell?
Yes.
Radamacher?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes. Motion is carried. Let's go to Plant Commission.
First item is the request by Klingelholtz Companies to amend the Red Cedar Canyon Plan Residential Development Conditional Use Permit to allow the conversion of a forty-unit Vista Canyon residential condominium facility located at 3001 Hanley Road to a fifty-five-unit residential care apartment complex, also known as RCAC, located north of Hanley Road at the East Way intersection of O'Neill Road and Hanley Road. Plant Commission recommendation to the common council is that it recommends approval of the amendment to the Red Cedar Canyon Plan Residential Development to permit a conversion of the existing forty-unit residential condominium facility to a fifty-five-unit residential care apartment complex with the following conditions: Limit to fifty-five units. Require a residential care apartment complex licensed by the state Wisconsin Department of Health and Family Services per chapter HFS-89 residential care apartment complexes. Require a landscape plan to be submitted for the northern part of the site where the second building was proposed. There's originally, there was two forty-unit buildings, and the Plant Commission is only recommending the conversion of this existing south building. Klingelholtz Companies to address concerns of participation in Red Cedar Canyon Homeowners Association. As the recommendation at the public hearing, there was one commenter that made comments, I believe I highlighted those in your, in the staff report. I don't know if there's any other residents from that area that might be here tonight that comment that we're not able to attend the Plant Commission meeting last Thursday. Mr. John Klingelholtz, Mr. Paul Mallett, and Mr. Rob Simonsen, representing Klingelholtz Companies and Apex Management, which should be the management group for the complex if the council decides to proceed, are here tonight.
Is there anybody other than those gentlemen that would like to speak to this subject? Anyone? Recommendation is for approval.
I want to ask Danny a question.
Why don't we...
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion.
Danny, did the company sit down and talk to the Red Cedar Canyon Homeowners Associations?
Well, let John, you want to discuss that item?
There was quite a few that were in the Planning Commission meeting.
We can understand where they're coming from. They have to pay dues up there, and the original plan called for, I believe, twenty-four homes there. So they're losing the twenty-four homes association dues. So I just want to see if they have...
Let me answer it, please. That's misinformation. The fifty-five units, there's two different projects that have been proposed. One is an eighty-eight unit building. This is a separate building. This is replacing fifty-five units, the existing forty-unit building. So it don't, you know...
Okay, that was my mistake, Danny. I'm sorry.
We're mixing two different issues here, so I just want to clarify that, that that's a different issue.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Nothing to be sorry about. John?
John Klingelholtz. What is the question? Have you got that answered now?
Well, as far as...
Yeah.
But have you met with the homeowners associations?
Night that we were here on the Planning Commission meeting. There was a gentleman here, and I think maybe it was two weeks ago already, where we came just to offer what we had and what we thought we were going to do. And at that meeting, there were people here from the association. And, you know, we want to be part of the community. And we said, "If we need that, if our people are going to be going there, we will be part of it, whatever you think that we need to do."
Okay.
But what we need to do is redo the site and have our own sidewalks and kind of our own little area and get it looking good and sodded and sidewalks and so forth so that these elderly people can walk on our own land, not on somebody else's. If we need to get to that point and we need to go into the association, we will be willing to pay for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, John? Motion is to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Motion's carried. Thank you, John. Good luck.
The second issue before the common council, night recommendation from the Plant Commission, is renewal of the conditional use permit for the use of 904 Third Street as the manufacturer representative wholesale sales office with two non-resident employees. Mr. David Tank is the original applicant. Mr. Tank still resides there and has their business there. This conditional use permit was originally approved in 1999. We've had no concerns with this particular issue. The Plant Commission recommends approval with the original conditions that one commercial sign upgraded in three square feet in area, no additional signage other than, or lighting for purposes of commercial use identification, and that this permit is non-transferable.
Move to approve.
Any discussion or comments?
This, subject of this conditional use permit is in my district, the fifth district, and we have not had any complaints at all on this operation.
And this was for another two years?
Yeah, two-year renewal, so it'd be August 2009.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Motion's carried. Let's go to Finance Committee. Review the few bids submitted for supplying fuel and gasoline to city departments in the period of 9/1/07 to 8/31/08. We had one bid from Consolidated Energy Cooperative for premier diesel oil at $282.3 for seventeen thousand gallons for a total of $47,991. And for no lead gasoline at $2.695 for twenty-nine thousand gallons for a total of $78,155. Grand total of $126,146. And recommendation from Finance is to approve that bid.
So moved.
Second.
Included in that bid is the ability to move up or down from that particular...
By market vote.
By market vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Motion's carried. Application to Hudsonaki Association for a temporary Class B retailers license to sell beer at the Pig Roast Event on 9/22/07 at the Hudson Sports and Civic Center, 1820 Hanley Road. Recommendation to the council is for approval.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Motion's carried. Let's go to six. Application to St. Patrick's Church for a temporary Class B retailers license to sell beer and wine at the annual fall fest on 9/15/07 and 9/16/07 at 1500 Vine Street. Recommendation from Vine Ads is for approval.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Motion's carried. Next item is to review the bids and consider awarding the contract for Nye Street and Aldridge Avenue Storm Sewer Improvements Project. And I'm going to let Catherine, our attorney, speak to that. And also, she does have a little notation for all of us. Would you like to read that or...
You should have in front of you a memo just was put up at your places tonight. On review of the bids, again, it was determined that timber companies did not submit a bid that complies with the project manual. There's one item in the bid that's called a mobilization fee, and the manual limits that to five percent of the base bid. As the memo indicates, their lump sum bid for that item was over the five percent by quite a bit, and so their bid doesn't comply with the project manual. The next lowest bid is F&amp;K's at $186,660.65. And Chuck and I talked about this, and we're in agreement on that. If you have any questions substantively, either one of us can answer.
Recommendation is to work to F&amp;K.
Yeah. Because that's a non-compliant, the lowest bid was a non-compliant bid.
And it was non-compliant because of the $20,000 mobilization?
Correct.
It was too high?
Correct. It was over the five percent.
Right. But the total project was still lower than the other bid?
Correct.
Could have been, depending on what happened during that project. Could have been depending on what happened during that project, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Chuck, do you want to address this?
Yeah, well, we received five bids ranging from 184 on up to 263. My latest engineer's estimate was closer to that, 263, so we did receive good bids. F and K is just over $2,000, slightly higher than the Pember bid.
The purpose behind the limitation on the mobilization is to avoid front-end loading a contract with a mobilization fee and also to avoid loading up a lump sum bid on something that's may not be as measurable as quantity type or, you know, unit prices.
Yeah, it's a unit price bid, so, you know, the quantities can and will vary from when it's bid. So, you know, ultimately, the project will come in on that range. But to say, you know, that's how it was bid is it's a unit price bid.
Because of the closeness and the possibilities of change during the project, I did ask Catherine to look at that to make sure that we're awarding to the right bidder.
I'd like to make a motion at this time and a comment. Move to approve the bid for $186,661 rounding off for F and K trucking and excavating and to comment that the difference between this and the Pember bid is approximately 2%. Not a big difference.
Any further discussion or comments? If there are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. We're going to have a committee, medians for public works, public safety, or the park board. Unfinished business is update on projects. Have any comments, Mr. Chuck?
Included in your council packet, excuse me, was the latest plans for the lakefront park improvements, the wall project. And just to cut to the chase, so we did meet with the DNR and we've got, there's essentially two permits. One is, was out there, there's a 30-day publication requirement for that one. And then there's a 15-day permit that we will be submitting. So the permitting shouldn't affect our proposed project schedule to open bids on the 13th of September for consideration of award on the 17th. When we did meet out with the DNR on site there, there is some erosion and stormwater quality concerns that we'll have to incorporate into this project. One being that they didn't want to see direct runoff of the lower tier that's all paved directly into the water. And so what we're planning to do is incorporate a strip of pervious pavers to allow that water on the hot blacktop instead of going directly into the river to infiltrate into the ground, and that's what we'll be proposing there. So that's one minor change. And again, the, per the council's direction, we are alternate bidding the Batuminas Trail.
Major question. Are we going to get that done this fall?
Yes, the project's on schedule. The wall, the plan is to get the wall and the trail and those improvements in place. There is some question of whether or not the final turf establish to get seating done this year and established is a concern. And so that could bleed into 2008. We'll have to shore up the site. Right now, it looks like unless the contractor's very aggressive, we'll have to, you know, temporarily shore up the site. And then next spring, he'll have to spread the topsoil on the remainder and establish turf at that time.
Well, keep us informed on that project because we don't want another half job finished and then a flood in the spring. Okay? Any other questions of Chuck? Okay, thank you.
Oh, I could have had one more thing. There was a question, we've, we talked in the past about whether or not we wanted a railing on that lower portion there. And I did talk to your building official and, and having discussed it, you know, it was his thoughts that it would do, a railing would do more harm than good. And so at this time, we are excluding a railing. And the reason for that is it's really kind of a mixed-use type of area with the potential for bolts to more up. A railing would be a potential hazard for them. But we are recommending that, you know, you keep bikes off that lower path and limit it to just pedestrians.
Well, the upper wall has been there for about 35, 40 years, and that hasn't had a railing. And if we feel we need one, we could add it, I suppose, later on. Okay? Thank you. Update on health insurance options.
We're planning at some point later this week, early next week, to add hot committee meeting again. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago and threw out some different ideas for me to check on. We will get to 2008 rates next week. So that'll at least give us something to work with as far as numbers. So by the next meeting, we should have closer to something being a recommendation from that committees.
I want to mention the reason that we're going after the health insurance and trying to find something that is much more compatible is that out of a total budget for the city of $6 million, the health insurance alone for the city is about 1.4 million. So we're taking a strict look at that to see if we can't get something with the same coverage and hopefully at a lower price.
But I think it should be pointed out at this point, because of the annuitants that we have onboard, we're not able to get a bid at this point. We have 15 annuitants on the program retirees. Nine of those are over 65 years old. And at this point, we haven't been able to get a bid because no one will go over the 20% of annuitants to the total number. So that's a problem that we're trying to solve right now.
Right, and Al did
But you had an approach to that as well. Would you want to mention that to
Well, we're talking about whether or not the folks could sign up for social Medicare. Medicare and a supplement, and then we did, we ran a rough program on that. It would probably save them about $5,000 a year for each of the retirees. And again, depending on which situation you look at and, but I mean, it's an option that I think they should look at or we should offer. We're working on that right now.
Which could be an incentive for them.
Oh, absolutely.
If we got those off that list, then we could get some additional bids.
Correct.
So that's kind of the approach that the council is taking. Okay? Preliminary 2008 budget and financial analysis of government accounting by Eddie Caruso.
I was hoping to have handouts for you tonight, but I hit some problems on Friday with our system. And as I worked on it today, they became so variable that I thought it was a little preliminary to give you what figures might be available based on the levy limits that we have. We have to remember that the whole levy limit, the problem that we had, I shouldn't say problem, the levy limit that we had to deal with before has now gone away. So they're rewriting how the levy limit will be calculated. One of the issues is how is debt calculated? Is debt going to be part of the levy limit? Is debt going to be in addition to the levy limit? Is debt prior to July of 2005 going to take effect as part of our, that's used in the calculation for the levy limit? And that after 2007, is it going to be? There's so many variables that when I started working the numbers, I had them all over the board from 143,000 on up. We did some debt restructuring in 2007 that will impact this, could impact it very well if they keep it the same. So at this point, before I start throwing numbers out there and we start thinking how we can divide those figures up, I think that we should wait till we hear from the state a little bit better. We don't know what we're going to do with, if they require us to go out for referendum on debt. That could be a big impact. We could not afford police vehicles if that was the situation. We might have problems that we have to look at for infrastructure as far as our stormwater management. There's just some major issues that we are waiting on the state. So that will impact the budget tremendously and impact what monies we have available. So at this point, you know, keep you informed. We maybe can schedule a workshop down the road. Anybody has information, anybody wants to, you know, understand fund accounting, I'm here to help you and tell you, and I love it. So, you know, I can just let you know how it all works. But other than that, that's all I have, if you've got any questions.
Budget's due back the 24th, right?
24th of September, yes.
The department has.
If anything, a budget workshop would be nice, and I know Dennis had requested that earlier. And when would be the earliest that we could have a referendum to deal with some of these issues that we need to look at?
I haven't checked into that. I would think if we're going to do that, we're going to have to do it in the fall, real soon.
There are some, what we can do to our staff, there's some timetables, you know, as we have, the notice has to be set out. So maybe we can check on that, so we can determine how far out we have to get that scheduled. There's notification requirements.
We might want to plan ahead on that because we're probably going to be in that position anyways, so.
Oh, chances are.
Yeah. Maybe we should start that ball rolling.
Well, I can get the timeline and backtrack it, and we can pick specific dates.
I can see that, too. Keep in mind that there is chances for a referendum for the, non-binding referendum for the library, referendum for new high school, and a referendum for the city.
So we do have elections, obviously, in February, but that wouldn't help us in 2008.
I can tell you from the experience I've had, if you remember, I tried to do a referendum last year. You do have to, by state statute, come up with a referendum question quite a bit in advance. So Dennis is correct that we should be thinking about that at our earliest opportunity.
I'll put together a time chart so we know where we're at.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, communications items for future agendas, any alter person in addition to what we talked about?
I would like to address the packet of information that you dropped off this week from the chief of police. When are we going to, I don't know if we're going to do that tonight?
No, that's in closed session.
Okay. We're going to take that up in closed session? Okay.
City Attorney?
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, I was just waiting for Alan to finish. Would like to commend all the people we have visiting with us tonight, all of the audience. And they have obviously not come here to voice their own opinions about some issue before us, but to observe their counsel at work. And I commend you for doing that. Please keep coming and bring your friends.
Whatever that means.
The more the merrier.
Okay, anyone else? City Attorney?
Nothing here.
City Administrator?
No.
Okay, the next item is a closed session pursuant to 1985-1C Wisconsin stats to consider resignation and separation pay request of the chief of police. Need a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Horsett?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Rodamacher?
Yes.
Burchill?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Take a few minutes and we'll go into closed session.